We'd like to welcome everyone to the May tenth meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. The prayer tonight will be given by the Reverend Robert Johnson, Avonese Presbyterian Church.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman of the Agreed City, City Manager and our Cleric. Let us together bow our heads. Our loving gracious Father, we come before you this very precious day to thank you for waking us early this morning. You started us on our way and you brought us all through the day and you stayed with us all in this day. And now, Lord, you brought us together to our city meeting. And dear God, we ask that you may look upon us and search our minds and our hearts. Anything that God does not like you, we ask that you remove those things, cast them forth in the sea of forgetfulness, that they may not rise to harm us in this meeting and nor at the judgment. For Lord, we count it a blessing that you have entrusted the government of this great historic city in the hands of our mayor and our aldermen. And you have allowed the citizens, Lord, to come together in such a meeting as this that we might share our concerns and our issues that face us in the local community. And so we ask that you may guide our deliberations, our thoughts. For you certainly a God of order and a God of peace and a God of harmony. So dear God, we thank you for what you are doing with us and through us this very moment. Have your way, for your way is always the best way in doing business in such a time as this. And we will give you the glory and the praise for all that you are and all that you will continue to do. And as we prepare at the conclusion of this meeting, then we will leave here better than we came to go back to our various communities and make life even more better, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Johnson.
Ma'am clerk, would you call the robe?
Alderman Bingel?
Here.
Alderwoman Harris?
Present.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes, here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Bess?
Present.
Alderman Odom?
Here.
Ma'am clerk, do we have petitions tonight? Thank you. Our first one tonight is Wendy Card. If you'd come up and give us your address for record.
Good evening Board of Alderman. I'm Wendy Card and I'm a resident of New Bern. I'm here to address issues related to the petition of citizens. In my circles, other residents have expressed concerns they have with current procedures. They want to participate but are apprehensive. Here's why. People don't want to announce their addresses. According to the city's code ordinances, they are not required to. All they have, all they need to say is if they are a resident or not. You can have this policy requiring citizens to identify themselves and state their address, but you cannot enforce it. If the citizen refuses to identify themselves or disclose their residence, they must still be allowed to speak during the public comment period, under statute and under the First Amendment. Secondly, citizens want the opportunity to address individual board members. Your rule designed for the maintenance of order and decorum restricts the content of speech. This potentially violates the First Amendment. The city's code of ordinances also notes speakers must be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. With that said, members of the board should not be able to personally attack people attending the meeting. I fully researched this topic and also conferred with a municipal attorney who agrees with these findings. In closing, I'm here to request that the board stop asking citizens to identify themselves with their addresses and allow them to direct questions to individual board members. I want to make it clear for residents watching this that May seventeenth is the election for the city of New Bern, mayor and alderman. Early voting has already started, so please get out and vote and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Board.
Rebecca Tindall.
My name is Rebecca Tindall and I currently reside at five seven two one Gondolier Drive in New Bern. I was here last month and I spoke about the vulnerability of Union Point Park. Even though there is a second memorandum of understanding, because it's a working conversation, things can change, just like in a contract. If both parties agree, it could change. So with that four minutes that I spoke last month, I stayed to the end of the meeting. I went to the bathroom. I came out of the bathroom. I was at the top of the stairs. I looked down. Michael and Carol Moore were in the middle of the steps with their back against the wall. I didn't think anything of it. I proceeded down the steps. As I got closer to Carol Moore, she proceeded to say, "Oh, do we still have to talk about this? You still going to talk about this?" I looked at her. I did not engage in conversation with her. I proceeded to go down the steps. I was walking fairly quickly. I'm not sure who tried to grab me or who touched me, but someone touched my arm.
Ms. Tindall, this is an opportunity to talk about city events. This is not an opportunity to get into any type of debate or forum about personal issues that you might have with individual citizens. I would suggest you take that up with the civil court. Do you have anything germane to the functions of the city of New Bern you would like to talk about during your four minutes besides character assassination of individuals? Without specifically naming names.
First of all, we need to have safety in City Hall. I'm in City Hall and I am practicing my First Amendment right to speak, but this should be a safe place for everyone to speak, no matter what they're speaking out about. So as I was saying, as I continued down the stairs, Carol Moore was following me down the stairs.
I'm going to call you out of order.
I was in City Hall, Mayor.
Do not mention individuals.
And I was being harassed. Nobody in City Hall should be harassed. This is about safety for your freedom of speech. I came because there is a concern about the park. At no point should someone meet me or two people meet me in the middle of the steps where I found out there was no cameras. If that's true or not, I don't know. This is what I've been told. So as I continued down the stairs, Carol Moore is following me down the stairs and I said,
You are out of order.
Do I need to pull out my phone?
Chief, would you please remove the lady from the courtroom?
And I said, yes, pull out my phone.
Please remove the citizen from the courtroom. She is out of order. We do not mention individual people in this forum. Thank you very much and please.
They decided to go back up the stairs and they reported to someone. Who did they report to? Somebody on this board they reported to because they weren't leaving. So I'm saying now that safety needs to be in here. So let me grab my bags, sir. So I also want to say that this is the safest way for me to go down the steps. Well, I'm glad to go down the steps with the officers because I know it's going to be safer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next citizen will be Bernard White.
Good evening, Mayor, Alderman and Alderwoman. My concern is about Stanley White. No problem, ma'am. My concern is about Stanley White. And also the elevator. The amount of money you're going to spend for that elevator or if you get in that elevator, or escalator, or you want to call it, is more than what I was trying to get. And I understand things changed twenty years ago when I come down here. We talked about elevators. I've been talking about it every, almost every turn. And the money that looks me like would be some money that would cut short or come from Stanley White, rebuilding of Stanley White. Now, we come up, they come up with a second plan and I'm on that committee. And I don't see how in the world you can come up with a second plan without meeting with the committee. We haven't seen any second plan at all, but it's on the paperwork. So what I'm saying is that I totally disagree with it and the plans that we had already laid out and went through with, I'm going to do my best to stay on that and I'm not going to change it under those circumstances. So I just want to get that out. I mean, because it's not fair. It looks like everything that's dealing with recreational or dealing with youth or people enjoying themselves has been pushed back. And I can go back further and tell where some other things were pushed back. Down here, okay, as a former president of Recreation Advisory Committee, we helped to orchestrate and get Union Point in the shape that it's in now. Okay, before then, there was Bicentennial Park. And we thought Bicentennial Park was going to be for the citizens of New Bern. It said from the mayor that was there at that time, it said that we could always enjoy that. But it came to the point that they put these two buildings on. When they put those two buildings on, there's no, nothing out there but parking space. I don't understand how we can allow this to keep around happening and we can allow people to build buildings or companies to come in and build a bunch of buildings without having a recreational space in the middle of that for families or women or even husbands who have children, little small children. The reason for that is so they can take their children out there and let them play and watch them, not go to every park that we have. And if we have thirty parks in New Bern, if we had thirty parks in New Bern, that's never enough. That's never enough. Anytime we look at things now, it's against recreational. And if you go back and pull the old things, I'm a bold person. If you go back and pull the old sheet out, very old sheet, you'll see city manager, you know, you see the mayor, the Board of Alders, and on the other side over there it said Recreation. Little thing broke out Recreation. And back then, they started Babe Ruth Lea and all the everything. The city catered mostly to youth. Now, why are we not doing it now? Why are we not doing it now? So now, when I leave, you're going to start saying, "Oh, you."
Thank you, Mr. White.
Our next citizen is Edwin Vargas.
I'm Edwin Vargas. I reside at one nineteen Random Wood Lane in New Bern, North Carolina. This week and a week from today, Tuesday, will be Election Day finales. And I'm encouraging the citizens of New Bern to please come out and vote. These are pocketbook issues. I don't think the economy here is going to be great forever, but you got to, we have to look at both the county and the city to see what we can do as far as share resources to cover costs. Because if this city has a serious economic downturn, we're going to really be watching things and what's going to have to happen is either they're going to provide services or raise taxes. This city hasn't raised taxes in quite a few years. So I encourage the citizens of New Bern to look over the candidates, look at their scorecard and compare and see what they've done in their areas that you're voting for. And really come to vote on Tuesday, because the numbers are now low, but I'm expecting traffic to pick up Saturday and for people to vote this coming Tuesday. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That is all of our petitions.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Foster, on the Stanley White Center, wasn't that plan that we approved, the plan that was original plan of the two-story building?
Yeah, yes, sir, it was. And so if you remember, a month or two ago, we had two options because the discussion was to, basically eight million dollars the team was allocating. And so our contractors came up with a design that basically fit that eight million dollar cost. Then we looked at the original thirty-four thousand square foot structure and that price is approximately twelve million dollars. So this board ultimately gave direction to pursue the thirty-four thousand square foot facility for twelve million dollars.
Okay, so originally we were looking at building back a Stanley White Center almost in the same square footage as what we current, what the old White, the old one used to be.
Originally, originally, yes, and now the footprint is large.
And we approved the one with almost double in the size of it?
Close to it, close to it, yes.
I thought I remembered it that way. I just was confused. Thank you.
Okay, this time we have the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to amend the consent agenda and pool. Item number six, proclamation for the Forgotten Twenty-Nine, to be discussed tonight. And that's my motion.
Second. Motion, second is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, for allowing me to have this time to speak on behalf of the Forgotten Twenty-Nine high school students. These twenty-nine high school students from J.T. Barber High School bought the civil rights movement of the early nineteen-sixties home to New Bern. These brave twenty-nine students, women and young men, ages ranging from sixteen to eighteen years of age, protested, marched. Marched the streets of New Bern protesting against the local segregation policies. Marched protests against, during a time of Jim Crow rules, these brave twenty-nine young men and women, during the course of their protesting, was routinely insulted and abused and later incarcerated. But that didn't stop them. I tilted my head to them. During a time of Jim Crow rule, it had to be, it had to take some mighty brave teenagers, by the grace of God, to get out and protest. These twenty-nine teenagers protested, marched, peaceful protest. And it took them after eight months of protesting. They sit down at two lunch counters, two businesses here in this city. A lot of us is familiar with it. The Clark's Drug Store and the Crest Department Store, and they did a sit-in. And after eight months of protesting and an economic boycott, those two businesses opened their doors, opened their lunch counter to serve black customers. Those twenty-nine brave teenagers, they changed the course of New Bern's history. So those twenty-nine, for me, would never be forgotten. Mayor, I would like to take a moment, if you don't mind, and Board, to briefly read this proclamation. And after I read the proclamation, if the Board so allows, we have one of the twenty-nine high school students here with us tonight. And hopefully, I hope that he would like to say a few words. Mayor's Office Proclamation. Whereas on February first, nineteen sixty, the sit-in movement of the nineteen-sixties ignited at the F.W. Woodworth in Goldsboro when four students from N.C.A.N.T. sat down at the whites-only counter and refused to leave until they were served. And whereas at that time, the Jim Crow rules required black customers to purchase their sandwiches and sodas at the back door and then, and take them to go. They could not sit at a lunch counter without being arrested. And whereas the sit-in movement spread across North Carolina and other southern states, where some of the first town sit-ins were organized by young people in New Bern and Elizabeth City. And whereas the New Bern sit-in began on March seventeenth, nineteen sixty, when a group of twenty-nine African-Americans, mainly high school students, entered the front door of both the Crest Department Store and Bob Clark's Drug Store, where they sat down at the lunch counters with bibles and books and asked to be served. And whereas the store managers refused to serve them and asked them, and asked, excuse me, that they leave. When the students refused, the lunch counters were closed and police arrested the twenty-nine African-Americans. And whereas the persistence and action of those Forgotten Twenty-Nine led to the desegregation of New Bern's downtown businesses just eight months later. Now therefore, I, Dana E. Outlaw, Mayor of the City of New Bern, on behalf of the New Bern Board of Alderman, do hereby proclaim the month of March as a time to remember the Forgotten Twenty-Nine. And I just want to say their names, please. Namely, the teenagers were Charles Bell, Horace Chapman, Shelton Kirkman, James E. Benjamin, Linda Pelham, Carolyn Stockey, Doris Humphrey, Lois Arrington, Sidney Sasser, James A. Dixon, Jimmy Suggs, Alfred Barfield, William Shepard, Eddie King, Johnny Bess, Charles L. Dixon, Raymond Collins, Patricia Whitehead, Willie Corman, Leo Bell, Charles Aldridge, Lynn C. White, Edward Bellamy, Freddie Sasser, Jimmy Thompson, Darryl Poole, Willa Mae Deans, Ray Southerland, Southerland, and Robert Bell. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of New Bern this, the tenth day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two. Dana E. Outlaw, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for signing this and doing this. And I know Mr. Barfield thanks you as well. As I asked before, if Mr. Barfield would like to come forth, we all are familiar, we all know Mr. Barfield, most of us. He is a native New Bernian. He has been a lifelong citizen of New Bern. He has also been a lifelong advocate of equal rights for all. So, Mr. Barfield, if you'd like to come forward and speak on behalf of the Forgotten Twenty-Nine?
Sixty, excuse me. Sixty-two years ago, and this building right here, was twenty-nine black students. Just want to say that this is, we all overdue. Back in the sixties, it was hell in New Bern. But once they would have, we had God on our side. My motion. I'd like to say thank y'all for doing this. Charles and I had talked all the bigger and mayor a couple of years ago. And they were very pleased what we was trying to do. My next project, I wanted to get a marker. Because see, when people come here riding around on the bus, they see houses. They see business, but they never see why the twenty-nine black kids in New Bern put New Bern on the map. And my theme was, this is the light of our, we're going to let it shine. And we did this year. So if anybody wanted to contribute towards getting a marker for the Forgotten Twenty-Nine, you can see me, I live at eleven oh five North Passage Street, across from the park, Dog Park. But I want to say one more thing. It wasn't only the Forgotten Twenty-Nine. The gentleman that just spoke, Bernard White, Barbara Lee, excuse me, Barbara Lee, they picked up the cross and carried the struggle in New Bern. So thank y'all for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Mayor, point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
Alderman Bess, you probably wanted to, we have to officially vote on this because we pulled it out.
Yes.
I don't want us to forget that so it doesn't get, become official.
Well, if there's no more questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Second. Motion and second is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries. Let's go to item number eleven.
Mayor, next item is a presentation on Juneteenth of New Bern. At this time, we'd like to ask Talina Massey to come up and make her presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Back again, another year.
Goes by quick, doesn't it?
It does. It really does. This year went by very fast. And Lord, we are definitely working behind the scenes to bring you guys another great Juneteenth festival this year. And not just a festival, but ten days of activities for everyone in the ENC to enjoy. So I'm doing it a little different this year. I don't have a PowerPoint for you guys to go through and none of that. I'm just informal conversation, going to let you guys know what we have scheduled and where maybe our New Bernians or citizens and you guys can plug and play your support if, you know, if you deem necessary. But I again want to thank all of you for your support in the past. I appreciate you coming out. Mayor, you were there last year to attend and several others. Just having you there and showing your support, also the discretionary. Also, the discretionary funds that you, those who contributed as well. To say we appreciate it is an understatement. This festival is growing organically. And I have no doubt with what happened last year and what we have lined up for this year that it will continue to grow in our area and be a reason for people to come and celebrate all of the diversity that New Bern has to offer. So with that being said, let me get into the schedule. I'm not sure if you all have it, but there is a working schedule that I did send for your review. This is a working document, is constantly changing as we bring on more partners and more organizations to participate and collaborate with. This document will continually be updated until we get to our celebration. So with that being said, I'll give you a little bit of what's going on. Starting Friday, June tenth, there will be a KISS one oh one point nine interview that will tell, if you guys are familiar with one oh one point nine, they're heard throughout eastern North Carolina. But they have a very far reach, so this is an opportunity for us to get the message out there to other counties and things like that. There will also be the Art Walk, which was hosted by the Arts Council, which is typically a very big hit for us. They curate a wonderful Juneteenth collection at the Bank of the Arts that evening that is open and free to the public for anyone to come and enjoy. And it is usually a highlight that, that starts the beginning of our Juneteenth festivities. So we want to thank John and the Arts Council and everyone who worked so hard to put that together. It's very important to be able to see the diversity in our artistry here in eastern North Carolina. So the next day, we will have a Facebook Live conversation that begins to discuss the history of Juneteenth and how that connects to different areas in one of those areas of Africa. So that's an awesome conversation that is happening online, once again, free, on Saturday, the eleventh. Sunday, the twelfth, we have the opportunity to go to various churches throughout New Bern and discuss before their sermons, Juneteenth and the importance of that. So I want to thank our faith community for joining in and allowing us to have that time as well. Monday is our podcast with our one and only Wendy Carr here, who has been a supporter of Juneteenth for many years. And we have a special guest, which we will be announcing shortly. So that would be a great way to hear about everything else that is going on throughout the rest of the week in a more formal, informative setting. Tuesday, we have our Health Day. If any of our citizens are interested in partnering with us, we know that it is important to be able to assist in things like mental health, physical health, things like that, so that is our day to be able to do that. As of right now, we have Zumba in the park with Fort, at Fort Totten, and we're working with Foster and with Kerry to be able to bring those types of things to fruition. So that is our Tuesday. Wednesday is gonna be H.V.C.U. in Divine Nine Day. That is a youth event that we're very excited about. We have several colleges that will be visiting this area that day. We will have a youth event at the Village. We'll also have a lot of our sororities and fraternities, the Divine Nine coming together to speak on the history of those organizations and why they are so important to the diversity of New Bern as well. So there's Wednesday. Thursday is our Triumph Palace Lecture Series. And that is hosted by Miss Sharon Ryan and Triumph Palace. So we want to thank them for their support as well. Friday, the Younger Professionals will have their annual rooftop party, excuse me, rooftop social, which allows entrepreneurial engagement on the second floor and entertainment and food on the first floor. That will be on the rooftop of Oliver and, Oliver and Chee. So please try to support that as well. Any of our local businesses, a lot of our local small businesses participate in that. So that's a good evening for business engagement. Saturday is our festival, our parade and our festival this year. If you guys remember last year, we had the Marine Corps. They have also been requested to come back this year, and they're super excited about that. We will have the U.N. Ambassador, Sylvia Prustel, coming in here again. We have linked up, working with the TDA and Melissa Riggo to, to link up with social media influencers who will also be coming into this area that day to express to their audiences how, how well New Bern has been as an example and as the template for how to have successful Juneteens for other areas in other cities. The one thing that we do here when we travel, when we talk about this, is how well New Bern, how well organized we are when it comes and how big our celebration is and how diverse it is throughout the entire week. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for other individuals to come to our area and see how well we're doing. So we, we're also working with Foster on that and putting all of the, the pieces in place for that. But we have tons of community partners. And we're, our biggest partner for that is Dove Fest. Dove Fest will be happening this year simultaneous while Juneteenth is happening as well. I apologize that Ms. Carol is not here to speak on that. She is under the weather with bronchitis, so we wish her the best. She is in our prayers. But we are partnering together because, as always, we do not want to try to reinvent the wheel. We want to try to utilize the gems that we already have here in order to be able to maximize the experience for our citizens. So we will have that parade at eleven, and we will also have that festival this year, much shorter, twelve to four, as we know, it's very hot. It is very hot. So we learn from last year and we, we take a lot of the constructive criticism into consideration, and we learned that it was just too long. So we will also have some medical tents out there and some cool-down tents for people as well, just to try to mitigate the heat. It is in our, we will do our best this year also to provide the fireworks as well. Again, that was a big hit last year, so we are working on funding for that. If anyone is interested in assisting with that, again, that is usually our biggest ticketed item. But again, the feedback that we received from last year, it is imperative that our community is able to see things like that within their community. So again, the committee is behind the scenes, working to pull that together. We have sponsorship opportunities available, as well as anyone who wants to donate your time, your talent, or anything else that you would like to. We would certainly love to have you. We have meetings every Friday at six thirty via Zoom. They are open to the public. Anyone can join these meetings. We have had some very interesting characters during those meetings, but we understand that when we open up our meetings to the public, that's what we're gonna receive. So if you are coming with integrity and with a genuine heart to support, we welcome you on any of these meetings. And again, they're not just for the committee, they're for the entire community because this Juneteenth ten-day celebration is for everyone. So we wrap that up on Sunday with a play at the New Bern Civic Theater called Sankofa. It was a big hit last year, so we're gonna go ahead and run that back this year and make sure that we support that as well. That is a ticketed event, as well as the YUP event on Thursday, but most of our offerings are free so that the entire community can engage with Juneteenth and understand and get the information and the history of why it's so significant. As well as, we have not a Sankofa remembrance, but a Mayafa, and that is really just when mostly the community of women come together at Union Point Park, and we lay the seeds down for a, we thank everyone for what they've done. We remember those that we've lost. We honor them, and we just do a prayer and ask God to bring us a, another successful Juneteenth the next year. So that's all it is, it's just a remembrance. Last year, we had Ma Sampson out there, and we, you know, wrote names of people that we, we had lost due to COVID and all kinds of things, and we rang a bell, and we just remembered their names and thanked them for coming before so that we could be here. So that is everything. This year, I don't have an ask. I'm not asking for city holidays or anything like that. I completely understand that our city, again, is very diverse, and everyone is at a different stage in their walk with diversity. So as we, to assume that everyone is, as a progressive thinker, as the forgotten twenty-nine is foolish. So we are gonna continue to celebrate our diversity, our equity, and our inclusion, and ensure that everyone is in a safe environment and that they can really, truly understand the importance of Juneteenth, as well as just have a good time and enjoy everything that New Bern has to offer. So I only ask, I guess if I do have an ask, it would be that you support. That is it. In whatever way you find you would like to just help us. Everything obviously needs volunteers, it needs funding, it needs anything that any other festival would need. So we ask that, you know, you just help where you can. And we hope you enjoy Juneteenth this year.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, yes. Massey?
Yes. In regards to the Dove Fest?
Yes.
Ms. Carol, was she supposed to come here and inform the city that the services that is given to Dove Fest, we want to be in collaboration with Juneteenth?
Yes, yes. And that's why I said unfortunately, she's under the weather, so she couldn't do her part. And I, I don't want to speak for them. But yes, that is a collaboration that Dove Fest will handle, you know, their city support, things that they've done typically for Dove Fest, and will partner and do the, the other parts of the festival as well.
Okay. Mr. Foster, in regards to when the gentleman came down from the league and explained about voting, and obviously, I sit on the Younger Professionals as a founder and a board of director. I can't vote in support, I'm assuming? But I did want to know if I have the ability, if there is any funds left, like we did last year, if I can donate it to the fireworks? If I have the ability to do that again?
And just, I guess, too, just to clarify things. YUP is not putting on any of the events besides their Thursday event, but they, they are helping as far as being a fiduciary for the Juneteenth Committee. But Dove Fest is on five oh one C three as well, so it's just a partnership.
Alderwoman Harris, we're gonna speak with the Finance Director about, so we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then you will be, we will be coming back to put it on the agenda to actually get the street closures and stuff approved?
I think, I'm not sure if Parks and Recreation, I, I don't think they've received the application yet, but once they get that, that will go through the appropriate process.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that item? Let's go to item number twelve.
Mayor, next item is conduct a public hearing on the rezoning of thirteen oh one South Glen Burnie Road and consider adopting a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency, and consider adopting an ordinance to rezone thirteen oh one South Glen Burnie Road from C four Neighborhood Business District to C three Commercial District. This time, I'd like to ask Seth Laughlin to come up and make a presentation.
Thanks, Foster. Thank y'all for having me here tonight. So again, we've got the rezoning application for thirteen oh one South Glen Burnie Road. Quality Oil Company, properties point nine five acres in size. It's been commercially, been commercially used historically, currently a TV station. See the photo of the property. Existing zoning is C four, which is a Neighborhood Business District established as a district in which the principal use of land is provided for the retailing of goods and services to the nearby residential neighborhoods. Regulations of this district are designed to limit the businesses which may be established therein for protecting budding residential areas. An applicant is an asset for C three Commercial District.
Can you speak up a little bit, sir? It's, I'm hard to hear you.
Sorry, I'll get closer here. The C three Commercial District is established as a district for offices, personal services, and retailing of durable and convenience goods. This district will generally be located on the city's major radio roads. Because these districts will be located on high-volume traffic arteries and will be subject to view of not only local residents, but tourists and other non-local motors, ample off-street parking, inappropriate appearance, including substantial planning shall be provided. We get a survey of uses for C three, single-family and multifamily residential, high-traffic retail, automobile sales, rental repair, gas stations, car wash, restaurants with or without drive-throughs. Let's get back to the photo here. Up to the north, you've got O'Reilly's Auto Parts directly to the north. Across the street, got the wash house and a convenience store, Bojangles. To the east, you've got the Fox Chase Pub and Park. And to the south, you've got an office building, I think it's currently used as a church.
Seth, could you go back to the picture? What is O'Reilly's, is that a C three? Or is that a C four?
That is.
It's a C three?
Let's, let's look back.
It doesn't say, that's why I was curious.
That, that's C four also.
It's a C four, okay.
Yes. You have to go up about three lots till you get to the C three.
I see the C three, yes, sir, thank you.
So all the utilities provided by the city of New Bern. And so we've got the two thousand and ten Cameron Regional Land Use Plan. This area is classified as commercial, which is a mix of land uses included in this designation. Residential densities range from maximum of one to five dwelling units per acre. High densities are permitted within multifamily residential and planned unit developments and within some zoning overlay districts, within commercial areas of New Bern. The intensity, intensity permitted varies depending on the zoning district and overlay standards specified in the land use ordinance. Generally, this area is characterized by urban and higher-intensity uses that require urban municipal and public services. Incompatible uses within this land classification are industrial and agricultural. According to the Regional Land Use Plan, the subject property has high suitability for development. There are no environmental hazards on this property, and the property is not in a flood zone. So the proposal to rezone the subject property, the C three Commercial District, is consistent with the character of adjacent land uses and zoning classifications. Staff has found the proposed rezoning to be in the public interest and consistent with the city land use and transportation plans. And the Planning Board did recommend approval by the Analysts voted on April fifth. The staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning. We'd be glad to take any questions this time.
Well, okay, go ahead.
Seth, in the, the middle of that picture, I guess it would be northwest. That's a gas station on the corner, and it's C four. Why would it be C four and this need to be C three to be the same type of use?
Those probably predate this, then, the ordinance zoning district that gas station use, would be my guess. It's not a, gasoline sales is not a permitted use in C three, so it had to have gotten there before that district was adopted.
Well, I think it's, it's worth noting that right across the street is a gas station, so it's, it's not like it's out of the ordinary to have a gas station on that corner.
They don't sell gas anymore.
They don't?
No, not anymore.
Okay.
And I think the difference, too, is this one will not have food. I believe the other one that's down the street is like a convenience store and has other, what they consider retail items. This will have no retail items.
This one's, they, their business model is a small retail drive-through.
Just, just gas, that's it.
Yeah, it's just gas and drinks, and I think they carry like three or four items.
Okay, I'm gonna open up a public hearing, and if anybody from the public would like to come forward and ask questions, make comments, statements concerning this item, you're more than free to do that this time, and then we'll get back with some other questions.
James Woods, nineteen zero three Country Club Road. Is this the old?
BB and T bank.
The TV station?
No, no, it's across the street from the TV station.
It's across the street?
Uh-uh, no, I don't think so.
No, it's gotta be the TV station, because O'Reilly's is on this corner.
Oh, you're talking about, I know what you're talking about, but that was a long time ago. I thought you were talking about the current.
It was WPN or UPN station or something.
Yes, that's what it was.
Yeah, the old television, okay. Not, not Channel ten.
Channel ten, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
I'm kind of with Alderman Odom. I don't understand why this one has to be a C three if everything else in that area is C four. And I mean, looking at that, knowing that area and having worked in that area. And I, I mean, looking at that, knowing that area and having worked in that area for several years, that... It's really not big enough for a gas station. I mean, it, it isn't. It, it, the building there now, it might be, it might be fifteen hundred square foot? Cause, I mean, I, I just don't understand why it has to have that designation if everything around it isn't designated the same thing. You've got a C five to the left of it, C four all around it, why is this has to be C three?
The applicant desires to open a gasoline sales station on this site.
Well, this site, Alderman Odom, I, I know the station across the street does not have gas at now, but they still have tanks in the ground right there on the corner of Glen Burney and Brunswick. And if they're C four, it seems like that whole area would be C four. And not, you have one specific C three, everything is C four in the middle of it, you know? Once again, we're back at this pick and choose in zoning areas. If we're gonna zone everything, it seems to me that whole area should be a C four, because everything else is C four there, except for that one lot that you want to make a C three.
The applicant wants to make it a C three. I'm explaining the, the situation, yes, sir.
Does anybody understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. Anybody else like to come up and ask questions, make comments, concerns?
Uh, my name is Daniel Dinsby here. I'm with Polly Oil Company. Uh, we're the ones who are petitioning for the change. Uh, and you're right, the, the tanks are still in the ground across the street, uh, so that, that could be an active station. But, but we do have a little bit of a different concept. We are not typical retail sales. We have a very, very small window that we sell through, uh, only about four hundred square foot even has any product in it at all. So, uh, we, uh, we're a little bit different, and the purpose of that is we're able to build stores unlike most of our competitors. And we sell gas cheaper than most of our competitors. So in this day and age, I do feel like it's a neighborhood use, because people want less expensive gas right now more than ever, so. Uh, but I'm here to answer any questions if you have, and happy to, and thank you for considering us. We've been wanting to be in New Bern for quite a while, and, and thank you for letting me present.
So what are you planning on doing with the building that's currently there?
It'll be torn down.
It's gonna be torn down?
Right.
So how many square feet, uh, are you looking to build the building?
Our, our building is around... Oh, I'm sorry.
Because you would have to have cars that come in and come out, okay? So how, how are you gonna do that?
So, so currently, the existing lot has four curb cuts. Three of them are on Brunswick, one of them on Glen Burney. We're actually gonna close one of the curb cuts on Brunswick and keep the exact curb cuts that, where they are existing right now. Now, our building is an eight hundred square foot building. It has a restroom, a public restroom, and it, it also has a little office, and then it has, has a, a little sales room that's approximately fifteen by fifteen. And we have, the, the products that we carry mostly in there are five-hour energy drinks, candy bars, cigarettes, tobacco products, things of that nature. And so most, our, our main, our main product is gas, and, you know, and tobacco products is, is another big thing that we sell.
How far you and me from the ditch back there in the back of the, the building now?
Uh, the building will be, let's see, the lot, uh, trying to add it up in my head. It, approximately a hundred foot, something like that.
Have you taken a look at the ditch to see if there's any type of corrosion going on in the back? Have you had a chance to look at any of that?
I have looked at it, uh, you know, the, the, the positive thing about the, the gas world now is that, uh, our tanks are double wall. They have a solution in between the two walls, that if the solution goes up or down at all, it's reported to a, a, what's called a Vita root. That tells you if you have any gas escape or anything like that. So from an environmental standpoint, being close to a storm drain or a creek or things like that, uh, it's a, it's a whole different world from the old days of corroded gas tanks and steel tanks and things like that. So it's, it's highly monitored, highly regulated, uh, industry, so, uh, but, uh, we, we're probably not gonna get back that far and disturb near the creek at all. That's, uh, we, we'd kind of stay off of those, those type of obstacles.
So another question is, with, with this being a C four now, why do you want to change it to a three when that, that whole area there is already commercial?
Uh, the, the, the commercial that, the C four doesn't allow retail fuel cells. And so the, the C three does allow retail. We, if, if, if the other allows it, we would not change it. We, we would go with what we have, so. It allows other automotive products, but our understanding is it doesn't allow this particular use. So if, if we're wrong about that, then I'm wasting my time, I'm sorry.
That's, that's my question. I want them to explain what that difference is. A gas station can only be in C three, is what you're saying? A gas station? I don't want to...
A retail fuel, yeah, that, that, that's a use that's not allowed in C four.
Gas stations are not allowed in C four, is what you're saying?
Yes, by today's standards.
By today's standards.
There certainly have some around town that probably located there before that.
Grandfathered in?
Yeah, that were grandfathered in. But today, to put a gas station, it must be in a C three. I just want to make sure I clearly understand that.
Alderman Odom, do you have a question?
Um, Seth or Foster, our new gas station, our city garage, did we rezone that? Cause that's C three now. Do you recall?
Right, we'd have to, we would have to look it up on, on G I, on our map.
I'd have, I'd have to look up the history of that. That one few days ago.
Isn't it right down there where the C three is? See where the red, I mean, it's located back in the...
It, I think, if my memory is certainly correct, I think we had to rezone that because we put fuel cell over there.
That is correct. I remember. That is correct.
So that's why that was originally C four, and we had to change it to C three?
So my point is, we did it for ourselves, so.
Right.
You are going to be using underground tanks instead of above ground?
Are there any other residents that would like to come forward, ask any questions, make comments concerning this item?
I just asked, is this, is this gonna be for underground tanks or above ground tanks?
Bro?
The use wouldn't, the zoning district doesn't specify, but that's underground.
I, I, I have a question, sir. How many employees will you be, think you will have at that particular location?
It, uh, it, it varies. Uh, it's, we typically between three and six.
Okay.
Uh, we do have limited hours of operation from six to ten, but because we primarily operate in smaller communities, not, not smaller than New Bern actually, uh, we do a lot of twenty-four hours, uh, fueling for emergency services vehicles, and so we offer that to the municipalities that we go to. So we do allow our tanks, our, our stores to be used by municipalities at night and things like that. Very few residents ever use that, that, you know, at night, but, so we shut everything down at ten o'clock at night, nobody wakes up at six. Different, that's our typical hours.
To have cheaper gas?
We typically are the price leader. We, we really are, uh, we, we're independent. We have a hundred and forty stores. We're a family-owned business, so... Uh, you have a lot of the stores now that are being bought by these huge REITs and being controlled by Wall Street, and they have to have a certain level of return to pay their investors. We're not like that. We're a family-owned company. We've been family-owned since nineteen twenty-nine, and we're, we're just different. We're very cost-conscious, and we generally come in, the community benefits from, from our particular setup and operations.
I have a question. Uh, will there be alcohol sales?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, any other residents who would like to come forward, ask questions, make comments concerning this item?
If it's not some smear, I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing if you'd like to.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. Is there discussion? C and none. All in favor of a motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries.
So maybe our next item we're gonna have to do is consider adopting a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency.
Well, I mean, this board won't have any discussion out, the, the hearing is closed before you go into the motion. Is there any discussion about anything?
Nah, I saw photographs on, of his other stores in this nice looking facility.
It is.
Nothing being said, I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance, um, uh, revolution, uh... Consider adopting a revolution to thirteen oh one South Glen Burney Road to, from C four Neighborhood Business District to C three District.
Do we want to do item A first, and then we'll do item B? Item A would be adopting a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency?
I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion that we adopt the statement of zoning consistency, um...
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion on the second? Is there discussion? C and none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Dingel.
Alderman Dingel?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
I'll do yours.
Okay, uh, consider adopting an ordinance, uh, uh, for thirteen oh one South Glen Burney Road from a C four Neighborhood Business District to a C three District.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion? C and none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Dingel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any, any other items associated with item number twelve?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to item number thirteen.
Mayor, our next item is a presentation of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And you have a budget book in front of you, and at this time I'd like to provide some general information, then we're gonna go through a little bit of the book. So, um, a- after you leave here tonight, you can take your time to review this. If you have any questions over the next several days, feel free to reach out to the, um, to the finance director or myself. So, um, department heads started working on their budgets in January of this year. Uh, we did have a budget retreat with Board Baltimore on February eleventh, where the, where the department heads gave an overview of, of what they were looking for in the proposed budgets. In early March, the budget committee convened with those department heads and, uh, uh, for presentations. Uh, and then the budget committee has been working for the last several months on, on these budgets. So the next step after tonight will be a public hearing, which will be held on May twenty-fourth, and the goal is to adopt the budget on June fourteenth, so we, uh, we have time to, to play if, uh, there are any issues that arise and you have any questions or concerns. So the budget was developed keeping in mind goals and objectives of each department, and ongoing initiatives that we started such as resiliency, utility infrastructure, and stormwater improvements, improved streets and sidewalks, and quality of life issues. Uh, you know, we were in a, a little bit of a different situation this year, where we have an election on May seventeenth. Uh, budget has to be approved by June thirtieth of this year. So, so while we did look at, at, at a basic budget, there are capital items in this. The incoming board will have an opportunity to, to review and revisit capital items in the next budget year. So for the, for the total budget, the general fund, uh, budget is, uh, recommended forty-two million, five hundred fourteen thousand. The water fund, twelve million, three hundred fourteen thousand. Sewer fund, thirteen million, nine hundred seventeen thousand. Electric fund, fifty-eight million, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand. Solid waste fund, three million, six hundred forty-one thousand, and other funds, eight point five million. The total city budget is projected at one hundred thirty-nine million, nine hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars. This is a four point seven percent increase over FY twenty-two. The increase is due to inflation, cost of goods and services, increased fuel cost, also an increase in state retirement, where we have to add an additional one percent, a full one percent increase. We are recommending a five percent COLA for city employees and a merit up to two percent. That's based on the, the annual evaluations. So the one thing that we have seen across the board, especially with municipal governments, is, uh, salaries have been increasing, and we've seen local governments everywhere that have constantly been, been raising their rates. We've also seen issues with private industry raising their rates, and, and the city has lost several very good qualified employees going to the private sector. So we have to keep up. As a matter of fact, and I'm gonna send this to you, the North Carolina League of Municipalities recently released a merit increase study. And when, it actually was released Friday after we'd done some things, and it give you, will give you an idea that we are in line with the request on this. I will also say that we are in the middle of a salary study, and we anticipate that study being completed by the end of the first quarter of FY twenty-three. And at this time, I fully anticipate coming back to the board with some additional recommendations. Uh, our goal is we are going to have to maintain and, and keep our workforce intact. Um, uh, the number one asset that this city has, we, we, and we do have a lot of assets, but it's our employees. And if we don't retain those employees, we're in trouble. So this budget is balanced. In the general fund, we have not pulled from any fund balance on this. Revenues, we saw a four percent increase in ad-hoc warm taxes, which equals to about six hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. And we saw seventeen percent increase in sales tax, which equates to about one point four million dollars. We did have approximately nine point six billion dollars in capital requests this year. This budget, uh, rec, uh, for capital requests is approximately five point two million. And I'm gonna give you some highlights of that. In administration, we are looking at adding security cameras, streaming the PEG channel on Roku, uh, adding a new public alert system. We had the, um, code red, and so we're looking at doing something else that's, that's better branded, that can, that we can text and call and email with. Repointing City Hall. Now, we did receive FEMA funding to appoint two sides of the building, but we still have the other two sides, so doing that. And also the stairwell improvements to the third floor of City Hall. Human resources, adding security cameras to that facility as well. And police, looking at adding twelve new police vehicles. And fire, planning and design for a future fire station in West New Bern. Adding a self-contained breathing apparatus compressor, diesel exhaust removal systems in all three of the existing fire departments. Adding a Wildland firefighting skid unit, extrication equipment, and vehicle replacements. Parks and Recreation, looking at replastering the aquatic center after it's, it needs to do after about twelve years of operation. And Public Works, continuing what we started, uh, a few years ago by having two hundred fifty thousand sidewalk improvements, and that will be tied, uh, directly to the, to the bike ped plan that is currently being updated and should re, be released within the next two months. Also four hundred thousand dollars in street improvements. And twenty eighteen, we did a, uh, a, a, a street survey to determine the roads that needed to be paved. That survey is being updated throughout FY twenty-three, so looking at, using that survey to, to rate the next set of roads and determine the priority on that. So at this time, what I'd like to do is go over the, the budget book with you, just so you'll have an idea of what to look for. Uh, the first in, information on here is the manager's budget message. On the budget summary, you're gonna see a variety of, of information. It starts off with the classification pay, pay plan. Now, we are recommending a five percent merit increase, however, we're only recommending a two and a half percent increase on the classification pay plan. The next item you'll see is, is the staffing and position history report. Last year, we had four hundred ninety-seven point five funded positions. This year, we are recommending four hundred ninety-nine positions. Now, though there are no new full-time positions, we are recommending in this budget. However, we had seasonal part-time positions in police and parks and recreation. Uh, they don't qualify as seasonal, part-time anymore, and so we're moving those to regular, full-time, hence that one point five new employees. On the next item, you'll see, do some subscriptions in the budget for each department with a breakdown. The following tab, you'll see travel and training, breakdown by, by department. And then the following tab, you'll see capital expenses for all departments in the fund. The majority of the capital is in vehicles, and we will finance that.
Uh, am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So on the capital expense budget where it says the police department, since I've been on the board every year, we're replacing vehicles, are we taking the ones that are getting, um, replaced out and actually, you know, selling them and actually getting some money back?
Yes, they're taken out of service, and, and basically there, there's a, um, um, basically a plan that they go by. When it meets certain criteria and seems those vehicles need to be replaced, that's when we look to replace them. So those, those are, are sent out to gov deals and, and auction off, yes.
And do we get a, do we have a good, do we get a lot of return on the investment, or?
I, I'd like to say that we get a lot, but traditionally with, uh, gov deals, you, you, you get a small percentage back of, of the vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item you'll see on the tab is going to be on fees and charges. The items you'll see in red are recommended changes. Most of those are in cemetery fees, especially when it comes to non-resident rates. We have been quite low on those fees. And so our goal has been over the last few years to continue to increase those to be in line with other municipalities and, and other cemeteries that we compete with. Then the next tab, which goes into general fund. And what you will see on, on those tabs, it has a breakdown for each, each department. And it has a list of budget goals and highlights of, of previous year and goals that the department are working on in the future years. You'll also see under the budget comparison reports, last year's budget amount, the actual amount, and also this year's recommend, recommended budget. And you will also see percentage changes by those line items. The budget then goes into the water fund, the sewer fund, the electric fund, solid waste fund, and all other funds. So I encourage you, this is a lot of information, so I encourage you to take this information back. Again, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We're happy to discuss, as long as you've had time to absorb it. The budget will be posted online at newbernnc dot gov on the finance page. And that, that will either be tonight or first thing in the morning. The copy of the budget will also be in Clark's office in the morning, and it will also be at the library. I'm going to remind you that the public hearing will be held on May twenty-fourth for this budget. And our goal is to adopt this budget by June fourteenth.
Foster, you mentioned about all the different raises. Was there anything in there for the board?
So that would be up to the Board of Alderman to make a recommendation to do that. So one thing that we, we did do, and we've got some information to discuss that for you, is we did do a survey of comparable municipalities. And we looked at Goldsboro, Greenville, Havelock, Hickory, Jacksonville, Burnsville, Kinston, Morehead City, Washington, Wilson. We don't compare to, to, to county government, but we did include Craven County. And so we've got that information for you. And if you'd like for us to look at that, we'll, we'll be happy to, to address that. And so you may remember back in FY twenty nineteen, twenty, that's when there was a monthly stipend and travel was included in that stipend. Before that, the, there was a monthly travel fee that was separate. And we did take into account for this on this charge, as well, so you can look at that and compare.
Well, you, you know, how I feel about this. We, we did talk about this earlier on in our time. And we, you know, we did say that we would talk about it on our, on our way out for whoever the next board is. But I'm not going to make any motion, but I will, you know, suggest that something like this should really be evaluated by the board that sits up here to increase. Because again, this, this hasn't been increased in years. And although you are elected to do the work, you are still doing work and taking your time and talents to serve your community. You should be compensated. But I just wanted to point that out, that it is due time for it to be increased.
I concur with you. Um, it's, there's a lot of time that each one of us, Alderman, I know, put into our wards. It's not just us coming up here, sitting up here for two meetings a month and coming up for special meetings. It's a lot of outside work that we do for our citizens. And I just think, not even for this board, like you said, the next board coming in. I think when we have a great incentive for people, we're going to pull in good people. A lot of people, you know, work, so they, they look at this as they have a full schedule, work in a forty-hour job. But then yet, they still have to do the work of, of an Alderman. So I think they need to be compensated for it.
Outside of that, Foster, I just want to say you and your team, this book looks amazing, the pictures, the way that it's detailed, the way that it's laid out, to me, I, I think it's going to be.
I like that.
Yeah, we can go each of these things with dues. It makes it easier trying to find the dues.
And it's got the line items to.
Yeah. I do have, I do have one question, the library contribution. I thought we did away with special appropriations and it's supposed to be under contract because that was a three things. We did away with special appropriation. We left three things, which was the library contract, because that is a contract we have to abide by. We, that, we don't have a choice in that. And the Allies for Cherry Point and the Highway Seventeen Association, I looked at those as contracts. But the library is under special appropriation and the other two are under contract. So I don't know how you figure that out and look at that. Still got to pay you. And I really think that, you know, is the Allies for Cherry Point, is that considered dues or is that considered a contract?
I think it's more considered dues for that, yes.
Discuss that later, Tom.
Please review it again if you have any questions as, as you go through your reviews. We're happy to meet with you at any time as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Foster.
Okay. Board, have any other questions, comments about the budget at this time?
Oh, also too, thank you in regards to getting that information and doing the research about employee pay. Because I'm usually a champion to make, I know me and Bobby are usually a champion to make sure that our employees know that they are an asset and the foundation of our city. And, you know, making sure that they have good, good pay is important. So thank you on that as well.
And I as well. So don't forget, I'm a big advocate for our employees.
Anything else on this item? If not, we'll go to the item number fourteen.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Sound Rivers for installation and management of Trash Trout Junior. This time, I'd like to ask our public works director, Al the Blade, coming up. And Al, do you have anyone from Sound Rivers tonight?
Yes, sir. On behalf of members of the board, please bring the item to you. Tonight also in attendance is Heather Jacob Deck from the Sound Rivers. And I'd just like to give a brief intro before I bring her up for any questions. We'll both stand at the conclusion of the staff before any questions the board may have. We were approached by Sound Rivers. They have a grant, a program that they have reached out to other cities in North Carolina to install these units. They're essentially debris catchers. We deferred to them as far as where they recommended the location. The board, we know of this location at Oscar Drive, which is right off of Blossom Creek. So without getting into too much of the details of how that's actually qualified as a location, both the flow and debris, which is what's needed. We did have input as staff because we'll assist in them installing the unit. We also have a backup location in case that location does not work. There is no cost to the city nor to our department. It is for a two-year duration, at which time we will assess going forward of what we will do with those units. With that, I'll pause and yield floor to Heather.
Good evening. It's good to be here tonight. I'm Heather Deck. I'm the deputy director of Sound Rivers. And I think Al gave you a pretty good overview of what we were asking to do in partnership with the city. I will say that we have just installed one actually with the city of Washington this past week. And so this is kind of a new program that we're doing. And we're also working with the city of Raleigh for another one. In part, this came about, it's actually a statewide grant. It's a statewide research project to not only monitor the macroplastics that we have in our waterways, but also the microplastics that we're seeing. The reason why Blossom Creek was selected is that our riverkeeper has been sampling there for the past year for, for some of this plastic pollution and waste, trying to get an understanding of how much we might have coming out of our, our, our waterways across the region. And again, this is in partnership with nine other organizations from, from the mountains to here on the coast and down into, to Wilmington. But we are anticipating taking care of all this, monitoring the Trash Trout, which is again, a litter collection device. We'll have volunteers that will support the program. And at times where we may need to remove it, say hurricane is coming, those things, we'll, we'll take care of that and be sure to remove that to ensure that there's no damage or anything that may happen. But these things are really secured well. They're able to take a lot of flow. And hopefully, we'll help at least collect some of the trash along Blossom's Creek. So I'll, I'll stop there just to be able to answer any questions that you might have.
I know that the first week or so, you're going to monitor this daily and then I think every two weeks. And are you responsible for the discarding all the debris?
We are. And so the volunteers will collect it, will get in and, and collect it. We made sure that the location was waitable and safe for folks to be getting in and out also of the stream. They will do it, you know, at least in pairs so that there's always more than one person there with them. Some of the trash will actually be audited for the research purpose, but not every time. But it will then be discarded in the appropriate.
And let's say on day thirteen, the friction of the debris. What probability factor or impairment factor is associated with the flow with the device and without?
I was thinking about what could it back up, flow back behind and cause flooding? It's a good question. The way the thing is designed, it's designed by another nonprofit in Asheville. And they've been installed all across the mountain region. They're, they're meant to be designed in a way that should not hold water back. But that's something we're going to watch very closely. And we'll go back every time there's a rainstorm, a significant rainstorm, say, you know, not every, like little drizzle, but, but check and clean out the trap to ensure that anything happens. But again, we're being flexible here. So if we find that there's a problem, we, we would certainly remove it.
Well, we, Al, you know, over at our twenty-one thousand gallon pump, the diesel pump, the first one, we kind of have a flow across there that keeps that water from getting, that, that trash from getting into the grate. But we don't really do a whole lot of cleaning of that. But if we, a month down the road, just thought this was the greatest thing since sliced bread and wanted to put three or four around different areas of town, what's the cost for one of these?
Yeah, unfortunately, like everything, their cost has gone up. I think now to produce, they, they're charging about seventy-five hundred dollars just for the production of the unit. And then there's some, there's some additional cost, concrete and other things. But you would be about eight thousand dollars just for the hard costs.
So for the next two years, you, you will be out every two weeks cleaning?
Yes.
Board have questions?
Other than I'd like to see a report, you know, as to how much trash you actually collect and remove.
We'd be happy to do that.
And I assume that the point source you're doing this is the, the greatest optimal location before the, the rest of the, of that canal becomes too wide or whatever to, to collect?
Yeah, there's certain parameters they ask for installing them. They have to be at least ten feet wide, the creeks, and at least have an inch of water at all times. And part, I wasn't the one that selected it. It was my staff. So I'd have to ask particular questions. But I think partly it was also accommodations to make sure volunteers could get down the bank safely and be in water that's not too deep.
Well, what's going to be interesting on the wind tide when the, tell us about that?
Goes backwards. We will have to, we will have to see.
I mean, you don't have any type of a reverse trout collector, do you?
No, but hopefully when it goes back the other way, it will get collected again on the way back down.
Okay. I mean, because we do have the wind tide here and so does Washington.
Yes, it does. Where, where it's located in Washington, the wind tide probably will not affect that one. We'll have to watch it for this one.
Okay. Board, have questions? We, I mean, we're, we're all about cost benefit and, you know, doing anything, do things like this. It's good for our.
We can do this trout.
Yep.
Couldn't be any worse than what the trout is already there. So at least it's going to be that much less.
Thank you to you and your staff as well, the, and volunteers for this. I mean, we appreciate it.
Hey, we're liking how you got that name.
I'm not sure how they came up with the name.
Okay.
In concluding, as mayor and members of the board, we're pleased to be able to partnership with, with organizations such as this. Our part would be to always be their eyes and ears and in between their visits as well. So appreciate the consideration and your support.
I am curious, what, who funds this? Obviously, you're, I know you're benevolent, but you're obviously probably getting funded somehow.
It's actually a grant that I think the city of New Bern has also gotten. It's the environmental enhancement grant that comes from the Attorney General's office, which is money from the old Smithfield-Puth agreement from two thousand.
Good.
That concludes our staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, there is a resolution associated with that if the board so chooses to approve this.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Sound Rivers for installation and management of a Trash Trout Junior.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and I must have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Approved. Let's go to item number fifteen.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution approving an audit contract for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to make a presentation.
So we did RFP and we submitted out to twenty-eight different CPA firms. And we also posted it on the website as well as North Carolina Finance Connect. The responses, we only received two. One was our auditor from last year, Thompson Price. And then the other one was through S. Preston Douglas and Associations. We ran them through a matrix, a scoring matrix that was provided by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. The scoring for Preston Douglas was a seventy-eight and Thompson Price was a ninety-eight, based on their RFPs. I asked the board to approve the audit contract with Thompson Price. We have built in with this contract as well, a audit committee, hoping to have finance staff, two board members and the city manager attend. They would do preliminary meetings, mid-audit updates, and then follow-up before the presentation to the board. The members that would be attending this meeting would be those that are working directly on the audit and know all of the, the details within the work that they're doing. The person that typically comes and presents to the board is the partner and has not physically worked on the audit at that level of detail. So therefore, you could ask your questions and, and, and get those answers at that point in time before it gets presented to the board.
How many RFPs did you say you sent out?
We sent out to twenty-eight firms directly, and then we posted it on two websites.
And how many responses did you receive?
Two.
Wow.
Could you help me, what, what is involved in scoring?
Sure. So the scoring matrix really addresses where they, if they meet the deadlines required within the RFP. It also had addressed their references. And so Thompson and Price had references for larger organizations, organizations that served utilities as well. And then Preston also had references, but they were all small townships. So one of our greatest concerns with that was their, their hours that they had set aside that they had allocated for this audit, one would, and their ETS would not be sufficient for the complexity of our engagement that we would have. There were. They did not have, meet the, the timeline that we requested within the audit. As you know, we have not had a timely audit in the last. As you know, we have not had a timely audit in the last several years, and so that's one of the goals this year. And we really need to have a timely audit, we need to meet the requirements of the LGC. And so that was very important to me as well and our staff.
You said you sent out 50, right?
Twenty-eight.
I mean?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, and you only had two, only had two individuals to respond?
Correct. So the firms that we sent them to are actually firms that are on the LGC website as well, so within our region and just outside the region.
Did a little research.
So when is the deadline?
For, for this contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the preliminary work is already starting in most municipalities, and for us to have a timely audit, we really need to get this contract signed as soon as possible so that we can start that preliminary work and getting, and get on the schedule so that we meet those deadlines with the LGC.
Alderman Kinsey, what I was starting to say, I did a little bit of research today because I'm, I'm a little bit troubled by the fact that we've used this group for three years and typically you want to try to find someone else to come in just to keep you on the level. And, you know, why did we only get two back? So I've talked to a couple of different firms and a lot of it has to do with the fact they can't find people to work. So I spoke to PB Mayor's, which is a accounting firm, used to be RSM, who we've used in the past. And both their morehead office and New Bern office said they're waiting on the kids to graduate, I think, and come out of the schools and try to get help, but they would be interested, but right now they wouldn't be able to meet the deadline. I believe it's November. If we don't have the audit completed by November, we get one of those letters, you know, that says you haven't done your audit. So I have some concerns. One of my questions would be, because of the lateness of all this, is it possible just to do a one-year with them and then we can start the process because it may be that the situation may be better and we can start maybe looking at some other firms for the following year? I just have concerns that we've worked with somebody for three years, I wasn't all that crazy about what the work that they did anyway, and was looking forward to bringing in somebody new. It's just my thought process.
I'm going to agree with Alderman Bingle on that because it was kind of a cluster, especially when, you know, when we were answering the questions literally on the spot. If it can be just a one-year for this to be done, then yes, I think we need to go ahead and do that contract and then immediately start looking for replacement because we want to get back on a good schedule of being on time and not having a late audit.
I would agree with what you guys have said.
Well, you know, the reason we weren't on time last time wasn't our current finance directors.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I have confidence that Kim will stay on top of and make sure that things are done correctly and in a timely manner to make sure that we get it on time. If you go, if you're going to ask to reduce their contracts by, to one year, you're going to probably have to do a new RFP for one year's service, correct? Kim, maybe you know that?
I believe so, but I could also reach out to ask if we can extend our current contract. I think that might also be an option.
So we can extend the contract that we have with them currently for one year?
I believe so. I would have to look into that.
Well, and it's critical that we do this right away to get this audit completed in time so we don't get another one of those letters.
The presentation too, I mean, you know, if we're going to extend it and utilize them, that would be of great importance that the presentation was a lot more better than what it was last time.
I think the presenter was just the problem there, a lot of it, to be honest with you. I just had a hard time following him. I understand the mayor's side of it better than I did his.
Right.
And I think that if I can just comment on that, that's why we're implementing an audit committee so that you have a sense of transparency, you have board involvement, you can ask those questions. And he just didn't have, he didn't work on the audit at that level. So it really was him presenting at a much higher level, and for that level of detail that you were asking would not definitely be more from the finance department or from the person that worked directly on that audit and did the legwork.
Ms. Kim, this is your field, and you're the expert. What do you suggest the board should do in regards to this here? Ask for an extension? Or go ahead and sign this contract and so we can?
So we did a RFP for three years. We sign a contract annually with them. I would prefer that. I feel very confident in the firm. We've got a good working relationship. However, I understand your concerns as well, so extending would be something that minimally we, I really feel we need to do.
Mayor?
Yes, sure. Kim, can you tell me on this contract where it outlines three years?
Towards the end of it, shows the cost for each year.
What page is that?
It's not really a page, it's like the last page of the, of that item. Forty-two, five, forty-two, five, and forty-three, five, and forty-four.
Well, that's our, that's our tally sheet, correct, from where we evaluated the two proposals? The one that says City of New Bern Audit Proposals Evaluations at the top? That's ours. So I'm looking at their contract?
We sign only annual contract with them. The RFP is for three years, but we only sign a contract with them.
So if we approve the contract tonight, that's all we're entitled, all we're obligated for is one year?
If you approve this contract, yes.
Okay.
Well, in your scoring, I mean, the other firm was going to do 228 hours and they're going to do 360 hours. I mean, how could two accounting firms vary that much in the number of hours they're going to spend, other than maybe, I assume your, your firm is going to spot check and do some 10% random audits or something? I mean, what's, what's the difference in the number of hours that they're going to do in the two proposals? That obviously is part of how you score them.
So, yeah, it is. That was where we really had a big gap because I just don't feel that that's enough time to set aside. And so I feel that it would be a struggle to get through that audit in a timely manner.
So, like what Alderman Odom said, so the RFP goes out, you ask for three years, but we sign it annually, so if we just move forward and approve this, we're only lacking for that year.
I would not feel comfortable unless the motion stated that we are approving a one-year contract.
It's called an extension.
I don't know whether an extension or a one-year contract, but that's what I would feel comfortable with. I wouldn't feel comfortable with approving an RFP.
Alderman, we were just looking at the contract, it says this contract can be modified with the express rate consent of both parties, so it could be modified to one year.
That would be my motion.
Is that your motion?
My motion, it would be my motion. I'd like to make a motion that we, let's see how we're going to put this, adopt a resolution approving an audit contract for one year ending June 30, 2022. Is that correct? Is that how, that's how you have it listed here? Is that correct for June 30? Or would it be June 30, 2023?
It would be for the FY22 audit.
Okay, that's right. That's my motion.
Second? Yeah, I was just saying, Bob, do you have a question or something?
I was just wondering what, what's the difference between just extending theirs for a year versus going through this? I mean, what?
I don't know.
Is it cheaper for us to extend them for a year or is it cheaper for us?
I think what you should do, I mean, I'm for the motion, but I think that the board needs to get started on this earlier, like February or something, and maybe have an ad hoc to reach out and find some, you know, somebody else. I mean, like, the city of Asheville, I think they have a policy that they, they get somebody new every, after three years.
What I found out today, the city of Asheville has a five-year contract and they never, they can't, you can't go to the same person, you can't renew the contract. They only do it, and it's just to make sure they have different eyes looking at their stuff, which I think is a good idea.
Mayor, attorney, are you good with the motion?
Yes, and just to ask, answer the question, if the board was inclined to ask for an extension, the company would have to agree to that before an extension could be granted.
Yes.
And they would have to agree in writing. So if you're inclined to make an adoption and enter an agreement tonight, you would have to consider the one in front of you.
So the motion that we made, they would have to agree upon that as well?
If the contract is for one year, it's before you, I assume, based on their, their preparing of that contract, that it would be for one year, which would match the motion that Alderman Bingle made.
Okay. Any other questions about the motion? If not, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 16.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution designating applicant's agent for NC Emergency Management Grant Number DR4393. FEMA requires agents be designated for the purpose of filing applications, representing and acting on behalf of the city with respect to disaster assistance grants. This resolution will designate the city's senior accountant as the primary agent and the city manager as the secondary agent for the Hazard Mitigation and Resiliency Plan Grant. Information from Mr. Shelly is attached.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution designated the applicant's agent for the North Carolina Emergency Management Grant DR4393 to our senior accountant, finance director, excuse me, and the city manager being secondary. Is that correct?
Senior accountant.
Senior accountant being secondary.
Motion in seconds, there discussion. See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
I should approve item number 17.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution approving a records retention policy for documents created or maintained pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act and Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Award. Ms. Ostrom will present this item.
Okay, so there are several items that we have in our current retention schedule that are less than five years. However, ARPA policy states five years after all funds have been expended, so there's a need to adopt, adopt the ARPA CSLFRRF funds records retention policy so that we stay in compliance with ARPA.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a records retention policy for documents created or maintained pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act and Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Funds Award.
Second.
Motion in seconds, there discussion. See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 18.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution approving a non-discrimination policy pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act and Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Award. Ms. Ostrom will make this presentation.
Again, this is another policy that's required to, for the ARPA and CSLFRRF funds. We have to adopt a non-discrimination policy in order to comply with the federal statutes and regulations.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a non-discrimination policy pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act and Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Funds Award.
Second. Motion in second, any discussion? See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries appointments, Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
None.
Alderman Astor?
None.
Alderwoman Harris?
None.
Attorney's report?
Nothing tonight, there.
Okay, city manager's report?
Only one item, Mayor, was you came in this evening, you saw a little poster out at the entrance, and just to remind everyone, it's National Public Works Week will be May 15th through the 21st, so support your local public works staff. And that's all we have.
Pause here a couple, just, the festival of fun looked very well attended and people, I mean, was, do you consider it a great success?
I think it was a very good success. I think one of the biggest hits was the dunking tank, and so Parks and Recreation did a great job for that, and I think they're going to try to bring that dunking tank back a few more times, and who knows, maybe they'll get some elected officials in that.
We also speak to what we did at 5:45 tonight. I think it would be good for the public to know that we did do groundbreaking and maybe a little more schedule about the elevator.
Yes, so groundbreaking did occur for the elevator project. That's a $3.9 million project, and as you may have seen in the, behind us, the contractors have mobilized. Parking in the back here is going to be disrupted for the next year. They are planning tomorrow to start putting up fencing in the, in the green space where the elevator will be located. Really, in about another week or so, you're going to start seeing some major work, start working on footings, and then the new building will start rising. So when I was talking to the contractor earlier, I asked, how firm are you on that year? And they said, it's pretty firm, so it will be a one-year project. We, we did have the bus that was located right out here and also a plaque, we're going to relocate the plaque and the bus. We're also working, the degraph and re-bus. We are working with the Arts Council on some type of cover that we have to protect that, so I've been working with Jonathan, and he has actually reached out to some art professors at ECU to give us the best recommendation for how we can protect that bus. And once we get that, we'll reinstall that in front of City Hall.
Great.
Mr. Hughes, could you possibly, I know they're going to put a sign up and then, but put some type of a, this type of elevation over here where folks can kind of get an idea what's going to happen?
Yes, we can do that.
Alderman Bingle, what's your word? Did you?
Yeah, no, I've had a few questions. People didn't know what was going on and, you know, it might be good. I know you don't want to put anything in the area where they're building, but maybe something under where it says City Hall, maybe there's some kind of poster or something you can put, coming soon or, you know, coming in a year, and a picture of the, what it's going to look like. And I, it's such a pleasing, it's going to look great.
We actually thought they were doing that today. They installed this, this large sign over here, but it was just their, their safety messaging for the contractors. That's what we're going to be entering for construction site. Yes, we will get, we will get something.
Okay, anything else from the manager?
I got a question. Where are we with appointing projects at?
So we have signed a contract with Oakley Collier and Associates, and they should be bidding that project out probably in another month or so. It'll take approximately six months for that project to be complete. So we are in, we are in the process. I think by the end of the year, that'll be done. So there will be a lot of construction going on, especially with the elevator going on. Oakley Collier, whoever they have for a contractor will be working around the elevator project, but all four sides will be completed.
And when will we start seeing something where the Stanley White Center, actual groundbreaking or whatever next on the list and have to be done?
So CPL, they are busy at work, they, you know, when they presented the first plan, it was a concept, so now they're actually making things work on their current plan. So they're busy doing that right now. I expect them to come back to us and make a presentation. It'll probably be in another month or so. Then after that, they will go to bid, and we hope to break ground on that project later this fall.
Great.
Okay. Let's start new business with the Antique Auto Show this weekend.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we're going to be having Cars in the Streets in downtown New Bern on Saturday, so come out and enjoy them. It's a local show, so it won't be as large as what we've experienced in the past with some of the regional and state ones, but it's always good to have the cars in downtown New Bern. But speaking of closing the streets, I want to make, I want to correct some information. I've had a few calls this week from businesses in downtown New Bern about some information, some misinformation that has been put out there, and I want to make sure for the record, Madam Clerk, that it, the correct information is out there. So first and foremost, on, let's see, in February, the end of February, a meeting was held of the downtown council. Two notices were sent. Two notices were sent of the meeting, and they were sent, sent to every business on Middle Street, Craven Street, and Polk Street. And I do have access to the list of people they were sent to. Whether people saw them or not, I'm not sure, but they were sent to all businesses. The next fact is that on February twenty-fourth, the downtown council held the meeting, and there were forty-plus attendants at that meeting. And the purpose of the meeting was to discuss street closures for the year. So it would be starting in April, going through the end of the year. There was good lively discussion. Of course, I was there. There was good discussion, and there were some opposed. There were, was one, one business that was opposed, that was attending of, of all the businesses there, and they just don't like the streets being closed. They're concerned that it hurts their business, whatever. But the original proposal was just to close the streets on art walk evenings. And because of the discussion and the back and forth, it was decided that they would keep it to every Friday night. Consistency was good. People didn't have to remember is it the first Friday, the last Friday. So lots and lots of good discussion. So the resolution that we approved on March twenty-second, that was unanimously approved from the board, included every Friday night, I believe it was Mother's Day, Easter Sunday, and there's a Saturday in there for the car show, and some other things as we get closer to the holidays. That's a fact. The next fact I wanna talk about is when the streets were closed on Easter Sunday. Again, we approved it, downtown council approved it. The streets were closed from the morning. There were three participants that signed up for dining in the streets for that Sunday morning. It was Baker's Kitchen that starts serving at seven AM. It was Cypress Hall that starts serving at ten thirty. And it was Captain Raddies who goes somewhere between seven and eight AM. Unfortunately, I don't know if we remember, but we had a pretty big power outage in downtown on that day. Charlie, I'm sure you remember that. I got the two-hour warning from you. But it impacted the side of Middle Street that Captain Raddies was on, so they were not able to get in the street. Therefore, it was only Baker's Kitchen, and it was Cypress Hall. It was stated, some misinformation is that the street was only closed for Baker's Kitchen. That is incorrect. Both Cypress Hall and Baker's Kitchen were out there. Raddies would have been out there if they had had power. Baker's Kitchen closes at two o'clock, so about a quarter to two, most of their tables were broken down, and their day was ending. But Cypress Hall was still there until three o'clock, the appointed time for the street closure. A picture was passed around that showed really nobody in the streets of Baker's Kitchen. That is incorrect, and I just wanna make sure that correct information is out there. As far as having signatures of people, you know, many times when we ask for street closures, you do it for Juneteenth and other organizations. We ask for neighbors to sign to make sure that they all agree. What the downtown business council did is we had a meeting, we publicized it, the meeting was held. A letter was sent from Swiss Bear and from Danny Battin stating who the, that the attendees were there. There was forty-plus attendees, and it was a majority of, of people that did that. I don't think anywhere, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it states we are required to do that. We ask people to do that so there's no problems that people can't come back. I did find out that all people were notified of the meeting and the agenda. So that is a fact. So I just wanna make sure. My point in saying all this tonight with the street closures is, this is, this is great for New Bern. You get lots and lots of compliments. I was not attending yesterday, but there was a meeting of the Bed and Breakfast and some of the hospitality businesses downtown, other hotels, and they are just, the customers are raving about the fact that they can come into our streets and dine on Friday evenings and really like it, and we're all benefit, benefiting from it. And I wanna make sure to, Mrs. Mosley, I just wanna, again, since you're our, our council this evening, it is not a conflict of interest to vote on something that impacts all people. I own a business on Middle Street that was involved in, in being able to take advantage of a street closure, but so were all the other businesses. So therefore, is that a conflict of interest? Yes or no?
No, ma'am, that's not a conflict of interest.
Okay, I just wanna, for the record, state that again, because there seems to be some confusion about it, and I just wanna state that for the record. But this is good for our city. It has helped. It helped during COVID. It, you know, it's been good for us, and I think we have to continue to do things. So unfortunately, there will always be people who don't agree with the things we do, and we try to go with the majority. So that's the point that I'm making, is when we have a majority of people that are in favor of something, and it's working good, that's what we go for. Thank you all for allowing me to be so long-winded.
I just wanted to ask, 'cause I know someone reached out to me. I think in regards to the signatures, I think the discrepancy was that they said to me was, it wasn't in the packet. I don't know whether they were there or not, but I think that's what it was.
Well, letters were submitted.
Then the other thing I wanted to know is, the downtown with the street closures, if there is other businesses that may wanna participate, like say, possible businesses on South Glen Burney, do we need to go through that same process that downtown did? Or, I mean, 'cause there's, there are a lot of people that are in the works and, and having the conversation of, you know, maybe this could be a citywide thing on specific days where there's other restaurants that may wanna participate and kind of have like an outdoor type of?
In other parts of the cities, I'm sure. Yes, I just need to go through that same process.
Okay. And we did, I don't know if you remember, but during COVID, when we were allowing outside dining, we waived the parking requirements for people. One of the examples would be Lacusette. We waived those parking spaces so he could build that outside, or put that outside area for patrons to build outside. So we did that as part of that outside dining to allow anybody throughout the city to do that, because.
But isn't it expired now?
I don't know if it had a sunset on it. I'm not sure that it had a sunset.
I think we changed the ordinance to do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But, you know, in closing the streets, anybody can request a street closure.
Okay, I just wanted to just see if it was something that maybe?
Most of them have parking lots, so it makes more sense for them.
All the time. I mean, maybe it's something where we just need to make an ordinance, and it's just set the tone.
Well, this isn't an ordinance. It's just a, a, we require, a request to close the street.
Right, but you're at a year, and if you, if it's something you wanna keep doing, instead of having to come to the board, it may be something that could be discussed, because there may be other businesses throughout the city that, you, you get what I'm saying?
I'm not sure, because if you wanna close a street, I mean, you may wanna close a street ten times a year. You would come one time and say, these are the dates I wanna close them.
That's true.
Whatever. But, you know, to just say, it's a blanket, you can close the street whenever you can.
No, no, not necessarily that. I'm saying the way that you come together and organizing this, I just wanna make sure that it's something that other businesses, restaurants can do throughout the city, or?
I worked.
Will it be, you know, more difficult because of the locations and stuff? So I guess it's a case by case.
Probably about ten years ago, I worked with the chamber to try to form the Glen Burney Council, 'cause we wanted, 'cause the complaint was, well, Dan Hunt's doing this. So we worked and talked to the businesses, and no one was interested in participating. We couldn't get a core group together to lead it and do it. Maybe, you know, a different time, they may wanna do it again, but it just takes the group of people coming together, and same, just like you could in Five Points. Say, here's the Five Points group that wants to do A, B, and C. That's the same difference.
All right, I will relay that information.
And it will also depend on the street. You've got the authority to close a city street, but if it's a state road, we don't have that authority to do it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman, one here.
Yes, I just want to remind everybody that May twenty-first, Ms. Sharon Bryant is doing at Triumph Palace, the Underground Railroad Symposium is from eight to five PM. It's family, bring your children. It's five dollars. You know, that goes to help support the different things that go on at Triumph Palace, so please show up. Another thing is, like, the gentleman under petition, the citizen, it is election time. May seventeenth is the election. Early voting is out here for a reason, and we need you to come out and vote. Voting is important, especially for the individuals that you wanna put on the board. Don't care who you vote for. I care that you do vote. That's important. The numbers are low, and if you wait till Tuesday, it may be raining, could be snowing, might be no electricity, and you're gonna be standing in line. So while it's here this Saturday, it is available. Please come out. You can register and vote the same day.
Seven thirty.
Yes, seven thirty PM. And if you do decide to wait Election Day, know that if you are not registered to vote, if you register on that day, you will get a provisional ballot, and that will be put to the side, and you want your vote to count. So please come out to early vote, and we wanna see your beautiful faces, and pass you out information to tell you to vote for us, and that is all I have.
Alderman Astor?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think most of us have read in the, in, or heard on the news of the damage that was done at Cedar Grove Cemetery. I had an opportunity to ride through there the other day, and the damage, there's a lot of damage there. I want to mention, there's a group, and I think they're all ladies. There may be, they are all, it's called Dequesters.
Yep.
They're doing a wonderful job in, in getting that cemetery put back together. There's been some conversations about this one particular gentleman they're trying to hire to come down to do the work on some of these older stones that were damaged. They have just really, they're doing a wonderful job. And, and please, if anyone out there needs a good organization to donate to, Dequesters, and Foster can get you the information. Dequesters is a wonderful organization, and they, they need the help to, to do the repairs to that Cedar Grove Cemetery. They've done so much work out there, and those ladies, they, they give tours in the cemetery to raise money, and they've done a tremendous amount of work. They've worked on the walls out there. They keep the headstones cleaned up and repaired, so it's a great organization. I hope that because of this damage, the city might have a little money that they can put, Parks and Recreation can put aside to, to help them out with a little bit. It's gonna cost a lot of money to do the repairs out there.
I wanted to agree with Bobby. I don't know what the, the procedure is or what the process is, but I really do think that the work that they do is very important. It's less work that we have to do, and if there are some funds, especially because of what happened, if we can in some way, you know, support the work that they're doing, I think it's important if we can do that.
And I would also recommend that if you have some discretionary, discretionary funds left over, to, they could certainly use the money. They're, they're, they're working hard to try to raise money to, to repair those tombstones. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
I just wanna say that one thing I really enjoyed, have been enjoying doing as mayor is, is being able to show off all the history and architecture of our city, and LR Pete Thomas, ninety-six years old, passed away Sunday, and a dear friend to all, and a true leader in this community. And a lot of the architecture, banks, and other things you see around at Triumph Palace, a lot of historic homes and renovations, Pete and family did that, so a great loss to the city, and I know you do, and others on the board. Alderman Kinsey?
I don't have anything tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Oh, yes. Kim, you know, now that we've approved these two, we've adopted these resolutions tonight on our record retention and our nondiscrimination policy. So when do you anticipate, or have you received notification that we're gonna receive the other half of the six point seven million dollars? I know it was supposed to be in May of this month, of this year.
So we did submit our report, and we should be, I can get back with you on that. I'm not sure when they're sending that money, but we did do our report, and they're anticipating and sending that out very soon.
Okay. I know we, as a board, we discussed that, and we approved, I think it was two hundred, two million dollars for stormwater, but we haven't did anything else, or approved, or the other monies, which is four point seven million dollars. So, and I just want us, really, I think we, as a board, sitting board right now, and that money was, it's going to be received, all of it, during our tenure, I think that we need to be the one to actually allocate how we want this, rest of this money to be spent. So I don't know how the board feels about it.
I thought we pretty much laid out the plan. I saw it in the budget book.
Yeah, we did.
For two million dollars, and I just assumed they'll come, I see the two million dollars in, in the budget book. The remaining funds might be in there. I just haven't looked through enough, but I feel confident that what we discussed.
The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars going into the redevelopment?
Yeah, I mean, I feel confident that that's what we discussed, and we'll see it where it's supposed to be.
I thought we only approved that night was for the two million dollar stormwater, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I thought. Am I correct, Kim?
Well, it was direction, wasn't it?
Excuse me, Alderman Bingle, am I correct, Kim?
I believe so. It was just the two million dollars.
That's what I, just the two million dollars, so we got like four point seven more million dollars out there to discuss how we want to spend. So it's up to us to make that decision.
Well, I know we agreed on two hundred and fifty thousand. Please don't, we're never on that. We did, we were, we agreed on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I probably gave direction to do all that.
So the direction was, was only given for approximately two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so two point two, okay. So those two things, okay. Just wanna make sure.
So is the board meaningful to discuss next night, or you want to wait till another board meeting?
Oh, I'm not interested in discussing it tonight. I, I personally think we need to wait until the, the new board is seated, so they may have the, the new members. If the board changes, the new members may have some ideas that they want to present. And it's gonna take more than, I mean, it's gonna take some time to sit down and discuss these projects. I mean, last time, we, we discussed it on a limb, and we spent almost two hours talking about it, so, you know. I think it needs to possibly be a, a work session or something like that, that we hear from the staff on the projects that are needed, and, you know, let's make a decision that way. But I'm certainly not interested in discussing it tonight, not without having some input from the staff, and the city manager, and recommendations on projects that are critical.
Well, that's what we received that night, that night of, when was it?
Uh, sorry, I don't remember anything that took place that night.
It was discussed on March eighth, and it was a, a bullet point line item of monies that was discussed in a meeting between the mayor and Alderman Harris, and I think it was, I can't remember the other Alderman, and that was brought to us that night to, for discussion. And so that's why, I just brought it up. I didn't know how the board felt about it. That's, that was it.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman?
Mayor, the only comment I would say is that the balance of that money, you may want to keep in consideration that this board obligated the future boards for eight million dollars in capital expenditures, a four million dollar elevator, and a four million dollar overage on Stanley White. So that eight million dollars, Kim, roughly debt service on eight million dollars annually? So we, we financed the elevator, right? That was four million, and the debt service on that was how much annually?
We paid annually, it is about three sixty, I believe.
So you might as well say eight hundred thousand dollars a year in annual debt service for those two projects, so.
Yeah, it's a good interest rate, actually.
Which is going up.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I have two more things. Can we get a status update on the FEMA money, or the, yeah, the FEMA money that was dedicated for the ditches and where we're at with those expenditures? Al?
Al, would you like to come, please? Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Alderman, Alderwoman Harris, we'd be glad to give you an update on where we're at. Right now, the contracts are out on, for the CAT D projects, getting ready to ward back to, as the board took action a couple of meetings ago. We'll give you a, a better status of where we're at with each of these, including the CAT A that has been in question as far as where we can. where we can continue to address some of the driveways and those ditches and the other areas that we are continually coming across, so-
Do you have a rough estimate of how much we spent, the last time we talked, I think it was about six, six-point-six million out of the thirty-two million that we received?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I recollect as far as the ballpark, but we can get back to you and get you a, a better figure.
And, um, is there a reason why it's taken so long to spend this money in regards to the ditches and getting them cleaned out, I know, is it, Bobby, was it like a year or two, I mean, how, how long was it supposed to be for us to be able to make sure that these funds were spent in taking care of the ditches? 'Cause hurricane season is upon us, and it's just disheartening to know that we've only spent six-point-six million of thirty-three million dollars, and they came and gave us that money, and I know you're new, but they gave us this money based on the assessment, and it, I mean, I don't know if we need to get more people out there, what's going on, but, you know, we need to start spending that money and get those ditches taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, 'cause I can't forget, I can't remember.
Okay, any other new business coming before the new board, Alderman?
Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that one.
Motion in second to adjourn, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say we are adjourned.